Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, August 7, 2012. I'd ask everyone to arise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you very much to the National Film Board for the video images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. I'd look for a motion for the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Rice?
I move adoption of the minutes of the city council meeting held on July 9, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate? Anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And then I'd look for adoption of the agenda. Councillor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition from the CDC meeting today, the Coca-Cola Centre RFP, and I suggest that under 9.6.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Crokin, any discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you. Just a mild correction on 9.5 is actually Public Works Committee meeting?
Oh, not a special public works. That was just a regular-
No, it says Protective Services.
Oh, 9. Okay, yes. Yeah, thank you very much. That's in our agenda. Thank you. Good catch. Anything else on the adoption of the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody to come forward to city council and address council on any community-related matter. I'm looking out into the sea of faces and I'm not sure if I see anybody coming forward. I'll ask again if anybody would like to come forward to address council. It doesn't look like anybody's going to come forward tonight, so we'll close the delegation portion of the agenda. We had no public hearings tonight. We do have some unfinished business, and that's item 7.1, bylaw C-1278, Smoke-Free Parks. We have a recommendation. Would anybody care to make a motion on that item? Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council amend bylaw C-1278 as follows: amend the heading to read "A Bylaw of the City of Grand Prairie in the Province of Alberta to Establish Smoke-Free Playgrounds and Athletic Fields," and amend Section 1 to read "This by-" excuse me. "This bylaw may be cited as the Smoke-Free Playgrounds and Athletic Fields" bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Wong. So, a motion to amend the bylaw, essentially changing the title of the bylaw. Any discussion or debate on that amendment? Seeing no discussion or debate, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, so we could have a motion for third reading. Councillor Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C-1278, Smoke-Free Playgrounds and Athletic Fields.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third reading of bylaw C-1278? Cross. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm looking forward to this, and I just hope that I'm sure there'll be a timeframe of implementing it with signs saying "Smoke-Free" and then actually a penalty for smoking, whatever it is, $200, but actually being enforced, the bylaw. So I'm looking forward to it and being enforced.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Third reading's passed. And there was no other unfinished business for tonight, and so that'll move us into the reports section of our agenda. And item 8.1, the strategic priorities chart for July to September of 2012. Councillor Radman?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council approve the strategic priorities chart for the term July to September 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radman. So, this chart makes up a regular part of our agenda and allows the public and council to literally stay on the same page as to what council's priorities are and what the progress is, as some of council's major strategic priority items are, is. Any discussion or debate on the strategic priorities chart? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. And would take us to item 9.1 committee business and Special Public Works Committee from July 9. Councillor Gustafson, I think that was your meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council receive the minutes of the Special Public Works Committee meeting held July 9, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? The business from that committee meeting has already been to a previous council meeting, and so with some tenders that were approved, so you'd get them done for the construction season. Seeing no discussion or debate on that set of minutes, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson, I think the next item 9.2 was your view as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held July 10, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions or any highlights that you wanted to find out from that meeting, Councillor Gustafson?
Yes, that was the meeting we had. We discussed the Muscahy Park entrances. Mayor Bill made a motion to request for a proposal to determine Muscahy Park entrance features. And the other one was for the-- another report to committee regarding 2012, 2013 capital construction projects.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Councillor Radman?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just in terms of these minutes, if you could look at 4.1 and ask if, Mayor Given, if you can recall your motion. Just moved by Mayor Given, the committee received a letter regarding the South Montrose for information. The South Montrose Steering Committee, should we have?
Yeah, I think that was regarding the South Montrose. Yeah, that could be worded better. But it wasn't from-- there was a number of signatories. It was from four different organizations, the gallery, the library-
I think they were all part of that, South Montrose Steering Committee.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, so if we can amend that, the minutes, sort of like that.
Add the South Montrose Steering Committee for information.
Steering Committee is in addition. Okay. Good catch. Any further discussion or debate? Any other notes on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. And that brings us to 9.3 Pursuit of Excellence Committee. And Councillor McLean, I believe that was your committee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to move council receive the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee held July 10, 2012.
Sure. Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate? Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor McLean, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to report on a couple of places where the funding went. Alberta Sport Development Centre Clinic hosts fundraising. They wanted to host a High Performance Sport Recognition banquet on October 13 of '12. They were awarded $1,000. As well, the Arctic Winter Games Legacy Fund came into play big time for the Alberta Sport Development Centre, in partnership with the Aquaswim Club, to host a High Performance Swim Camp, July 9 to 13. It was the first one at the East Lake Centre, so I think it was really good. It shows where the Arctic Winter Games funding is going. As well, Nicholas Bate, Colleen Nelson, and Alexander Martinez were each awarded $1,000 to travel fund from the travel fund for the ITF Taekwondo World Championship in Estonia in August 2012. As well, Cordell Nelson was awarded $500 for the same event, and I'm hoping they have a kicking success.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. That's good news. We voted on that set of minutes, so I think we're on to General Government Services, 9.4, and Councillor Radman?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held July 17, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radman. Anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Radman?
Thank you. One motion tonight. I move council approve a grant in the amount of $25,000 to the Centre for Research Innovation for 2012 core operations with funding from council's budget, and further request the additional $25,000 be referred to the 2012 fall budget deliberations. In speaking of this motion, we received a request, a delegation from the CRI for $50,000 to help with 2012 and 2013 for core operations, so they can transition as they seek additional grants and move towards more of a fee-for-service model. This will provide uninterrupted service to regional innovators. They had received, they've lost some significant funding, and this was a way to bridge them to the future. The funding source, as administration has reported, is from council's budget where there was some salary savings in that area. So I think that the committee really, meaning for true to our brand, which is opportunities through innovation, and true to our resourceful spirit growing opportunity, this services is, in our estimation, very critical to our Grand Prairie area. And this is a way, without impacting our budget, to provide some service. Obviously, the second half of the grant would be discussed at the fall budget deliberations. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radman. Discussion and debate on the motion. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Councillor Radman, could you just maybe explain CRI to anybody listening or watching that do not understand our acronyms?
Centre for Research and Innovation.
Thank you very much, yep.
Okay, thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Radman, was there anything else in that set of minutes you wanted to highlight?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple things. We did receive a update report, six-month update report, on our citizen survey results report. And St. Olney shared some actions from the plan as a follow-up and how we're doing relative to some measures, so it was a very useful update. We'll have likewise another six months, and in 2013 would be a two-year period, and we'll be looking at doing the citizen survey again. And finally, Alorma Gustafson requested, and we supported, the Prida, an update from Prida before budget deliberations this fall, so administration will be following up on that request. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks very much, Councillor Radman. And item 9.5, that Special Public Works Committee meeting, Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As you can see, there's a few of these Special Public Works meetings today, and as the paperwork gets done at City Hall and from developers and stuff, it's important that we get it on the table and get the construction season working. And this is one of those situations where we had to, we're able to call a meeting and able to get the construction in place for a couple of contractors around town. So I will move the council meeting of Public Works Committee meeting held July 18, 2012.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson, you did have an item of business coming out of-
Yes, one motion coming out of this meeting here, and I'll move the council approve a request to extend the period for subdivision approval and endorsement for the subdivision application Z-2008-0024, NW-11716 West 6 and Plan 9620256 Lot 1, for one year to August 3, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion?
No, this is just standard procedure for something that takes a little longer than usual sometimes.
Yeah, if memory serves, this was a developer who's-
Waiting on-
Was waiting for services to extend through another developer's property, and that wasn't going to happen in time for them to meet their conditions. Is that correct, Councillor Gustafson?
Absolutely correct, Mayor Given.
Okay. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Was there anything else from that Special Public Works meeting, Councillor Gustafson?
Yes, we covered the extension and another shop going up on the north end to Apple Autoglass. Their development is approved, and they'll be working on that very shortly. And then Aqua Terra applied to put a communications tower on their property at the landfill to communicate with their crews out in the field better, so we approved that as well.
Okay, thanks, Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you.
I think that brings us to our additional agenda, item 9.6. Councillor Crokin from our Community Development Committee this afternoon. Councillor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that I recommend council award tender T-51-434-12 Coca-Cola Centre Tunnel Upgrades and Site Drainage to K Shaw Contracting 2009 Limited in the amount of $977,008 excluding GST, and refer this item to the city council meeting on August 7, 2012, which is tonight.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Radman, or Councillor Crokin. I think we can drop that last bit because that was from the committee to refer it here, and it's here, so we probably don't need that portion, but-
I'll drop that. Friendly amendment, sure.
Any discussion or debate on the motion? This was at our-- Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to make sure that this number fell within our budgeted amount.
Councillor Crokin?
Yes, Councillor Wong. This funding is from three different projects in the capital plan that's been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carried. I don't think there are any other items of committee business, and we had no items of correspondence tonight, and we had no delegations. We have no notices of motion, but we do have some council member reports. Councillor Rice, you had AUMA, I believe.
I attended the Alberta Municipal Services Corporation Strategic Planning Session. As well, I attended Infrastructure and Energy Committee meeting, and we continue to strive towards getting the province to agree to LED streetlights all across Alberta. The savings would be hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. As well, I have been appointed to the Utility Consumer Advocacy Board of Directors. And the utility consumer advocacy's main objectives are to maximize consumer welfare by striving for the lowest delivered price while balancing reliability, quality of service, and effective regulation for both wholesale and retail markets. The most significant utility consumer advocacy initiative which impacts municipalities is representing the interests of consumers in over 120 Alberta utility corporation regulatory proceedings in the 2011-2012 fiscal period in which the UCA achieved over $100 million in cost savings. So I look forward to working with this organization. It indeed will be a challenge, but I think a very exciting one.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Councillor McLean, I believe you had Grand Alliance?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just got back from going to the Town of Grand Cash from the Grand Alliance. They asked us in the committee to come to their death fest, which is their biggest event in the Town of Grand Cash. They had 1,500 participants this year, so I decided, well, it'd be great for the whole family to go, and I brought the wife and two kids. We left on Friday, and I just got back today. One part of this race is 125 kilometers long, and soloists can do it, which I think they're off the wall, or you could do it in stages, five stages. And Friday was registration and festival just starting. Saturday was kickoff, and I was very proud to represent the city there because of everything going on. Before the runners took off, Mayor Louise Cruzik thanked all the Grand Prairie relay teams, because there was quite a few that were there at the event, and as well thanked myself for attending. I'm part of the Grand Alliance, and this is before kickoff. And there was about 2,000 at least there, at least or more. So I want to thank Mayor Louise Cruzik for that, and it was a great honor for the city of Grand Prairie. As well, so they took off on Saturday, and since I was going and realized I was going, I said, well, maybe I could participate. So I did stage five in three hours and 32 minutes in the dark, and I loved it, but I realized I might have to lose a bit more weight to do it better. So.
Your squad didn't run to death.
And then Sunday, yeah. Sunday was the kids' death race, starting off in the day, and my two children, Ken and Cara, were put into this five-kilometer race where hundreds of children were involved in, and they finished on time and got a medal. And then in the evening was a concert, and the closing out was Sam Roberts, who is truly a top entertainer in Canada, and he went right till midnight. And they built a beautiful area there for the concert. It was pretty amazing. And another, that night, Mayor Louise Cruzik and some of the councillors said they'd like to have something go on for next year, so we might bring this to Grand Alliance Committee about participation with some councillors, administration of having a race, raise some money for a park or kids' thing in Grand Cash. So further details on that, don't know where it's going to go, but I would do it again. And then Monday morning was the award show and the finish-off, so I really want to thank the Town of Grand Cash for inviting us, and I'm hoping it'll happen next year.
Great. Thanks very much for the update, and thanks for representing the city. Councillor McLean. Councillor O'Toole, you had the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum. Has anything been going on out there lately? Nothing too big, eh?
Not too much. Actually, on the 26th, we had our Dino Ball. A total of $231,000 was raised. Telus, the director of Custom Air Solutions and Delivery for Grand Prairie, his name is Glenn Lovis, gave or handed out a check for $81,900. And that was raised from recent fundraising promotion that if you got on a Telus cell phones, I think it was, and their cable, that they would take $25 from each and put that towards the fundraising goal. Criminal mind star Matthew Gray-Gubler wasn't unable to attend, and because of work commitments that was beyond his control, and because this was so close to his heart, he stroked out a check for $5,000 and handed it, or will be giving it to the dinosaur board because of his unable to make it, and it's a good program. He failed. Another highlight was the silent auction. After the silent auction was closed, Sean Paton of the Stonebridge Hotel was declared the top dino chef for 2012, and there was four competitors, four teams, I should say, and they all performed very well. The food was excellent, and if there was only one complaint, there was just too much food. It was awesome. It was a good program. Lots of good things went on that day. We had Gord Bamford performed during the dinner hour, and Emerson Drive finished off the show towards the end and played for about an hour and a half, got everybody going. And that's my discussion for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. If I could counsel, I see that it's in our list here, Northern Alberta Elected Leaders, and I'll just give a real brief report. Two weeks ago, the city of Grand Prairie hosted the Northern Alberta Elected Leaders meeting in Grand Prairie. We hosted it at the Coca-Cola Centre in the Stanford Room, had the opportunity to show off the Hockey Legends Lounge for lunch, and give some of the participants a tour through the multiplex, the East Lake Centre, in the afternoon. Most of the discussion was actually focused this time around on health services. We had representatives from Alberta Health Services and their ambulance section there. Of interest to the city of Grand Prairie was their ability to report response time statistics. The AHS ambulance folks were able to kind of clarify exactly what the difficulty was. There's some equipment that they have that's ready to go into their dispatch center, but the building that they had wasn't adequate to house the equipment, so they're waiting, negotiating on a new building, and then they'll be able to get up on the new equipment, and then they'll finally be able to give us, in a timely manner, response time statistics for ambulance service in our region. And the other presenter was something that I was pleased to be able to arrange, the Regional EMS Foundation. Laura LaBalle was able to make a presentation about their human patient simulator, which the city of Grand Prairie supported with a $30,000 contribution. It was an opportunity for her to pitch the project to a number of other municipalities in the Northwest that would all benefit from having another one of these units. As council knows, there's only one of them in the province right now, and it's stationed at Calgary, so an obvious opportunity for municipalities in the Northwest to share and bring in new service that would benefit our residents. So just thought I'd take up the brief opportunity, since it's on the list. It was either here or in council roundtable. I thought I'd report on it here. Were there any other council member reports from agencies, boards, or commissions? Seeing none, then we'll move into council roundtable, and we'll start with Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I wrote down a few that I got here, and I know there was more. It's been a few weeks. So, July 12, I had my quarter meeting with the city manager, Greg. All went well, and I'd always look forward to those quarter meetings. On July 14, 15, I attended the GP Firefighters Terrible Foundation for 24 Row-a-thon for children's dogs with wings for assistance children with autism. I was there during the day, and I went there in the morning at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning to half hour on the bike concept to try it at the East Lake Centre, or three or four of them, and it will make you sweat. As well, July 18, we had the meeting to review strategic planning for the city. On July 18, I also attended the Street Festival Kickoff. And on July 20, we had a meeting with Raj Sherman at City Hall. And as well, there was a barbecue that evening. And as well, on July 21, I brought Raj Sherman to the street performers downtown right around lunch, and it just stopped raining, but he at least gets to see quite a bit of the event, what happens, and I know it picked up and was really going good Saturday evening because the rain stopped. And as well, I brought Raj Sherman to the East Coast Garden Party to show him what events happened in our city that day and to take it back to the legislature that things do happen up north. July 24, I attended AccoGas 100-day Summer Centennial Celebration, 100 years of providing gas services. I also brought my children Kendra and Cara to the play, "He Got the Pipes." As well, they got to meet AccoGas mascot, Digger the Prairie Dog. It went over very well. And July 26, we had the opening at Walmart for a campaign for the Red Cross. I'm not sure how much they raised, but I'm sure somebody in here might know. And also, I just announced the death race, August 3, 4, and 5, and 6 with the Grand Alliance, the Town of Grand Cash.
That's great. Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. On Tuesday, July 10, I attended a Wapiti Corridor Planning Society meeting. On July 11, I met with Conrad Boychuk, or council met with Conrad Boychuk, the architect for the Crystal Centre expansion plans, to look at potential upgrades for the facility. On Tuesday, July 17, members of the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society met with the Minister of Infrastructure, Wayne Drysdale, regarding the multi-use plan. On Wednesday, July 18, I also attended the Street Fest Frolic. On July 20, I was at City Hall for a tender opening, and also at City Hall for the meeting with Liberal Leader Raj Sherman. the meeting with Liberal Leader Raj Sherman. Also attended the Atco One Hundred Days of Summer Centennial Celebration. On July twenty-sixth, I brought greetings on behalf of the mayor and council at the Walmart Red Cross fundraiser kickoff, and I didn't find out how much money they raised, sorry, Councilor McLean. Also, on the twenty-sixth, the Chamber held a mixer at Tito's Cafe Downtown, and I attended that. There was also the launch of the Sidewalk Cafe at Tito's on July thirty-first. And finally, on August first and second, the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance held a two-day strategic planning session at the Quality Hotel. I just wanted to thank everyone who came up for that. We had people come up all the way from High Level, Lacreat, Paddle Prairie, Little Red River, Manning, like all over the northwestern area of the province, as well as some industry people come up from Edmonton and Calgary. So it was a fantastic showing, and it was nice that we were able to keep them here for a couple of days because we got that little bit of economic spinoff as they had to spend money on their overnight stay. I really feel that Grand Prairie is, should be able to capitalize on those conferences and strategic planning sessions that could be held at the fabulous facilities in our city. That's all I have to report.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor Rice?
I, too, attended the meeting with the architect, the original architect of the Canada Games Arena. Very, I think, inspirational. I attended and brought greetings from the city to the opening of the Peewee Ball Provincial Tournament, probably something that everyone around this table can relate to except me. It was pouring down rain, and let me tell you, those young boys weren't quitting at all. None of them were running for cover. The Reeve of the County proved to be far more farsighted than me. She brought an umbrella. It was really phenomenal, the way those kids had no intention of quitting, as long as there was no lightning, they were continuing to play baseball. Attended the Atco Gas Hundred Days of Summer Celebration. It was a really interesting historical perspective done in a very entertaining way. During that, one of Councilor McLean's children was called up on stage to be a cat, in proving the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, refused to be a cat, announced she would be a dog instead. Attended the Street Performers Festival. I attended the kickoff of the Red Cross Campaign at Walmart, extremely, extremely well done, and I think certainly shows their commitment when they announced that for the two years previous, though Grand Prairie Walmart has been the highest in the province per capita in terms of donations. And attended the Chamber of Commerce After Five Business Mixer at Tito's Cafe, as well as the coffee party on their new sidewalk patio.
All right, thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I don't have a lot here, as I've been away quite a bit, but I was at the Walmart kickoff for, pardon me, the Red Cross kickoff at Walmart, and same sentiments as Councilor Rice had said about how well they've done in the past, and look forward to seeing how much they've raised. I was also at the Spray Park Sod Turning down in Musca Cepi Park next to the Bear Creek Pool. I attended that last week, and very excited to see a new spray park coming on. I think it's well deserved in the city. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Councilor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given, if they're finished over there. I also attended a number of things, the Street Fest Opening Ceremony Frolic was very entertaining. I've had a pursuit of excellence meeting, subdivision appeal meetings, family reunion, that was much like a subdivision appeal, I'll tell you. The Dino Ball was a great time. Again, thanks for all your work, Councilor O'Toole, and yes, there was an abundance of food, very, very good. I attended the Tito's New Sidewalk Launch Cafe, and it was a lunch, not a launch, but it was both of them. Very, very good, congratulations. While you were all sleeping on the twenty-fourth, I attended the, I brought greetings from Mayor Given and council, and cut the chain for the brand-new Princess Auto, their flagship store, forty thousand square feet of bargains for every man and woman and child in Grand Prairie. So that was it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was away quite a bit the last little bit, and I was able to luckily miss all the rainstorms in Grand Prairie. We had a downtown association meeting. We talked about the success of the Street Performers Festival, thanks to all those people for putting on a great show that weekend. And the other great success is the temporary sidewalk and patio at Tito's is in place and getting lots of use and lots of great reviews, thanks to the Take Part, Take Pride Committee for their support in that project. I did an interview with CBC, brief interview with CBC Vancouver in regards to the Enbridge Pipeline. There's lots of heat going on there between the girls out at the parliament buildings. I also attended the Conrad Boychuk presentation at Crystal Centre in regards to the possible Crystal Centre expansion. I went and spent four days in the wild at the Tepee Creek Stampede, took a two-day motorcycle safety training course at the Grand Prairie Regional College. About time, thank you, thank you. And I attended the Dino Ball, a great night, great event, great food. I can't say anything more, that was just an amazing meal and amazing, amazing support for the Curry J. Museum out in Wembley. And I'd also really like to take this time to encourage anybody in the developing industry or stakeholders in regards to the land use bylaw that's coming on the table next month. It's going to be, it's most likely going to be passed unless we hear from the public out there that they don't like some things, and if there's nothing heard, well, then we're going to let it roll. P.O.M.E., protective, sorry, Pursuit of Excellence Meeting. I'm really glad to see the reservoir feasibility study tender going out to the public, and thanks to Mother Nature for putting on a great summer. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. July eleventh, I had my meeting with the city manager, and also had the Crystal Centre Expansion Information Session. July twelfth, the GPRTA Board Meeting. July fourteenth, I also attended the Firefighters Charitable Foundation Twenty-Four Hour Rowing fundraiser. Eighteenth was the council strategic quarterly planning session, and I went to the Street Performers Street Fest event, which is now becoming one of the events of Grand Prairie inside in our annual calendar. The Acogas Hundred Days of Summer Centennial Celebration, at a Grand Spirit Foundation of Labor Management meeting, I represent the board on that committee. On July twenty-sixth, I also attended the Dino Ball and had a great time, with Dawn and I. July thirty-first, I went to the Sidewalk Cafe opening celebration at Tito's. I also wanted to thank Take Part, Take Pride Committee for their support. And August first, I, along with councilors Monroe and O'Toole, attended the Musca Cepi Spray Park Sod Turning and Photo Op. I wanted to thank the Elks. The Elks are great partners in that project with their contribution, so thank you to them. And a tender opening CKC tunnel upgrade, which we passed tonight. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redburn. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. I would like to also thank Mr. Wayne Drysdale and the premier of this province for contributing a total of ten million dollars to the dinosaur project. I don't know how that slipped my mind. Ten million dollars is ten million dollars. So let's start off with July eleventh, I was at the Conroy Boychuk event at the Crystal Centre to discuss the possible development of the Crystal Centre. On the sixteenth, I attended the Street Performers Launch, and on the twentieth, I went to the festival downtown. The sun was shining, lots of people. On the twenty-fourth, I went and attended the Atco Gas One Hundred Days of Summer, which has been previously reported upon. A number of council members were there, and I think it was a, I know it was a good event, and it was an eye-opener for a hundred years that Atco has been involved in the distribution of gas in this province. On the twenty-fourth, I also attended the Princess Auto grand opening, and on the twenty-fifth, I attended the K McFay Carlstrom Golf Tournament. This is a tournament where the money raised goes to local charities, and I happened to sit on the seventeenth hole, which was a par three, and Ken Sergeant Oniak had a brand-new truck there that if anybody was to get it in, the hole, they would have won the truck, and nobody did that, and that was for the dinosaur board, that was our hole. On the twenty-sixth, I attended the Walmart campaign with the Red Cross, and a very good event and great management team over there at Walmart. Twenty-eighth, I attended the Dino Ball. On August first, I attended the Spray Park kickoff, and once again, I'd like to thank the Elks for their generous support of this new addition to Musca Cepi Park. And yesterday, I attended Heritage Day at the museum and the park with my family. And when I wasn't doing anything else, I was watching the Olympics, so go, Canada, go.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. On the, so obviously, a number of the events have already been mentioned, so I'll try to be brief. I also attended the Crystal Centre expansion review that has been mentioned, and met with representatives regarding the two thousand and twelve Canadian National Native Fastball There's a committee looking to put together a bid. The two thousand and twelve version of the event happened over the course of the long weekend, and I can let council know that the bid committee was successful, so Grand Prairie will be the host site of the two thousand and thirteen event. The two thousand and twelve event was hosted in Cranbrook, and the tournament attracted sixty-six teams. So it'll be a pretty big summer event coming up for two thousand and thirteen, so good to see. I know that our Recreation and Sport Department was very involved in providing some administrative assistance to the bid team, and so congratulations and thank you to our city of Grand Prairie team that was able to act as a support, and so we look forward to two thousand and thirteen. On the fourteenth, I attended at Carpent Superstores, who held a charity event for a number of local organizations. I also attended the Street Fest Gala kickoff to the Street Performers Festival. The next day, I attended a meeting regarding Alberta's social policy framework that was hosted by the Grand Prairie Unit of Way. The next day, I attended the Reading University graduation, which was great to see so many kids excited about reading and so many volunteers and parents there to support the kids. I also attended with a number of other members of council, the meeting with Alberta Liberal Leader Raj Sherman. Over the course of the weekend, I attended the Out of Nowhere Art Festival and the Street Performers Festival downtown. On the twenty-fourth, I attended a meeting here at City Hall with Ted Miles, who is the CEO, CAO of the Alberta Alert Organization, and later that evening, I had a very brief visit with other members of council at the Atco One Hundred Years Celebration. On Friday, the twenty-seventh, I was at the Northern Alberta Elected Leaders Meeting, which I reported on previously, and then the next day, of course, was the dinosaur ball, which was mentioned. On the thirtieth, I had a meeting with the consultant who's working with, for the college on the redevelopment of the former Anderson Hall site. It's great to see that the college is looking at developing that into green space that will be an asset to Musca Cepi Park and the surrounding neighborhood. The next day, of course, I was there in support of the downtown association and the launch of the new Sidewalk Cafe, certainly happy to see that coming to the downtown. That gets us up to, I think that's just about up to date, and somewhere in there, council had our two-week break. Did it seem like it to anybody? I don't
No.
But that's all I have to report. If there wasn't anything else for tonight's council meeting, then we're adjourned. Thank you.